Almost there. Okay, well, good evening and welcome to council Monday. February, sorry, February, excuse me, went through out there already, April the 11th, 2023. As always, remind everybody, shut off the mobile device, put on vibrate, follow me toward right four P M. And hopefully the mic is good down there downstairs. Everybody can hear us at home. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Tuesday, April the 11th, 2023, regime of council is circulated amended, move by. That's the next second by Captain Counsel Valance, any questions? Any additions? Done, all in favor? Great, thanks. Any declarations of interest today? Hearing that, I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the minutes of the regime of council held on Monday, March 27, 2023, and closed meeting of council was held on Monday, March 27, 2023, is circulated amended, move by. Counsel Valance, second by Counsel Sukie, any questions, arrows or missions in those minutes? Hearing that, all question, all in favor? Great, thanks, Terry. I'll move right on down to student council report, council prescriptions, Steve, and so how they saw what's happening this week.
Oh, the biggest thing is the juniors and seniors go to N plus semis for badminton tomorrow in my spirit. And then the next week we'll be holding the N two plus finals. And then after that, then you guys are left enough to go to Thunder Bay for M Wasa. Um, as well as next week, there is a transition day on Wednesday, we're all, the grade eight tour coming to my high school will come around, get a tour of the school, talk to teachers, you know, meet their fellow students, just try to make them um, feel a little more comfortable when they come to high school because it can be a big jump. And there will also be a big sale at lunch held by the seniors to help fundraise money for their prom.
Right on. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just kind of thinking about the future and I know that Counselor Scorchinsky is going to be presenting to Noma, which is sort of a daunting thing. So I'm just wondering a little guidance in terms of, uh, like I was trying to think about what I would want. You know, student council to talk about. So, uh, I just wondered, I'd open that maybe to council in general, but I was thinking sort of some ideas like, I think it's really important that what I liked about last year was, uh, student counselors were given a task, so it's not just showing up. It's then doing something that did the land acknowledgement piece. This year they're doing Noma presentation and a, um, a thing at the, uh, at the school. So I'm just trying to think about things that they might want to put in and from our perspective, why it's been successful. I don't know if that's a useful conversation, but I thought it might help them prepare.
Yeah, for sure. I think it's great. I'll join to discuss the role of a student council. But I also think it's great to hear from the student counselors specifically on what they feel their role is and how much they have input and impact on council. And each, each year will vary from student council or student council, because as we know, and this, we're just talking pre, uh, before the meeting, this, this program has been running since 2011.
Yeah.
We are one of the few communities in Ontario, if the only right now that have a student council is the only one out there that has one. And some men are said two over the years, but nobody with consistency and we've been very consistent with our student council's program. So if there's any immediate counselors want to have from us to see if there's importance, but I think it's important for them to get up on the stage and talk about the, the impact and role they bring to our council.
Do we know how long there they've been given on the agenda?
Yeah, it's about a 10 minute presentation and then five minutes for question and answers. So I reached out to both student counselors to, to assist. And one of the things I was thinking of, you know, to try and make it interactive is, you know, if they structured the presentation almost like a Q and A. Uh, you know, I mean, I can work with both counselors on developing some questions and then utilizing those answers to inform the conference on what it's like to be a student counselor, some of the benefits, some of the challenges, those types of things.
That'd be awesome.
Certainly, and over the years we've, and this year is going to be quite dramatic. I think we're going to have, looks like the most six or seven ministers at the conference, maybe more, depending on, on the last confirmation. But for the student council also be able to get, and maybe we can discuss with the Noma executive to have a bear big question opportunity to be asked by our student counselors. We did that in the past. We asked the student council to get up in line and ask the question of the minister to specifically identify an issue within Northwestern Ontario. So maybe we can work on that and I'll reach out to Andrea and ask if, uh, if she can look into having some of those questions, because we do help write some of the questions for the board uh, in general, but they're questions specific to the region rather than individual municipalities. So it's a great opportunity rather than us getting up to the microphone, allowing our student council to get the microphone. I don't normally get up.
The mayor is very good at getting up whenever you know.
But I think it's a great opportunity for them to, as a student council to bring that, that view and also the opportunity to ask a minister. And I think it's great for the minister to have the interaction of our student counselors to realize how great this program is. I'm, I'm going to ask, I'm sure that you'd be supportive of that, and I'm sure Counselors alike will be as well, to get up and ask that question in a bear possession of the minister if there's availability. I'll, I'll look into that. And then so with the question and answer period that Mr. Scorchinsky has identified, we can have that student counselors ask the question in a bear thing. Great.
That's great.
Good, thanks for that report. Up next, we have a report on land lease agreement with the Port Authority, Mr. Scorchinsky.
Uh, so land lease agreement, port authority, the town of Marathon is the beneficial owner of the land parcels identified as PIN 62448 and 62501. Uh, these are the formal, former pulp mill sites. So these two pins, uh, equate to about a hundred acres down at the waterfront site. Uh, the town in Vitagong have formed and incorporated Peninsula Harbor Port Authority. The intent of the corporation is to establish the Peninsula Harbor Wharf site as a functioning Lake Superior court, which will generate economic development opportunities and employment. To date, feasibility work has been identified, has been initiated to look at rehabilitation of the site as well as marketing and contract establishment. To allow the port authority to utilize the wharf site, a legal land lease needs to be put in place to define the terms and conditions for usage. The town's legal council has drafted a land lease agreement to lease a portion of the pins 62448 and 62501 from the town to the port authority. As the port authority continues feasibility and business planning work in 2023, administration is recommending that a two-year temporary land lease be put in place as these activities are completed. This would also allow the port authority to transact business on the site at the current time. Once the port authority has sound future direction through strategic planning, a more permanent lease will be negotiated, which can then be tied to revenues generated through the court. Administration is recommending that an annual rent payable be the sum of $10 for both 2023 and 2024, so a total of $20. Options to council, approve the land lease agreement to lease a portion of the pins identified to the Peninsula Harbor Port Authority. Do not approve the land lease agreement or approve the land lease agreement with amendments. And your administration recommends that option A be approved and that bylaw number 2047 be approved, authorizing the land lease agreement with Peninsula Harbor Port Authority Corporation for the years of 2023 and 2024, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the municipality.
Great, thanks for that. I have a motion here that council hereby accept the report on the recommendation of land lease agreement for the port authority and further that the appropriate bylaw be adopted or authorizing land lease agreement between town of Marathon and Peninsula Port. Peninsula Harbor Port Authority Corporation for the year 2023, 2024, with the mayor and clerk signing as the agreement on behalf of the town of Marathon, move by. Counsel Valance, second by counsel, any questions? Counsel Woodruff.
So at the end of two years, is the option there, like if the port is busier than we expected to increase that footprint? Or is that what the footprint is set at that?
So in the lease, we've set, uh, I'll say a very simple footprint. So one of the things, uh, you know, we need to complete, uh, in line with the active living center work we're also doing is ultimately at the end of 2023, we'll be in a position to say, this is where the active living center is going, you know, based on council's approval or not. Uh, and this is where the port will be. At that time, what we'll do is we'll do the proper legal surveys to identify new pin numbers for those projects moving forward, so they have their own legal land disclosure.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, yeah, and just to, I mean, I think we all are really excited about the, the port and the idea of, um, new, new business. So is the way that the port authority and ultimately town marathon will make some revenue that this land is leased to the port authority and then they rent to a business that wants to come in and take a portion, is that that's the structure? And then my follow up question would be, I remember when the, when the mill was there, the rail came all the way down. If there was a company that moved in and said, oh, we want, you know, to set up shopping, maybe it's a bigger industry, but we need that rail line. Would the port authority be responsible for bringing that infrastructure or did that go to the buyer? I'm just looking for.
Yeah, excellent question. So, uh, with respect to the site itself, um, the port authority would have the authority to, uh, lease on a temporary basis, certain spaces. So, uh, let's use an example of aggregate. Let's say a load of aggregate came in that was going to be utilized to make concrete. And it needed to be on site for a month, right? The port authority, there, there'd be a tariff schedule on, uh, the monies the port authority would make off of, of that particular, uh, you know, load of aggregate. The town is still the beneficial owner of the lands. So in the permanent lease agreement, the port authority would still need the town's permission to sell and sever any piece of land at that site, including the rail bed. So the bed is there, of course, right? The, the line is taken out, but it's the town who is the owner of the bed. Um, and you know, I would recommend to council, and that's why it's not in the lease, that, you know, we want to maintain those infrastructure components. Um, at least at the current time, there may come a point where council says, no, we want to sell those and divest ourselves and, and sell them to the port authority. Uh, but I think this is a pretty pragmatic approach to help the port authority establish itself and continue to move forward in a progressive manner.
Thank you.
Somebody else? I think the key component of that is obviously we always knew there's opportunities in the port and once it's up and running and then the lease will be renegotiated 25, with the opportunity to generate, you know, some huge revenue. And then of course, being a 50 50 partnership with the First Nations, they would be at, the dividends will hopefully be paid back, uh, in, in, you know, reflective of the business that's operating on the site. So hopefully we can really develop that site to use dividends back to the community.
Yeah.
Over time.
And maybe I'd ask administration, like I always think about the Thunder Bay budget, for example, and we look at our budget and, and again, it just, it all goes to the residents. But they've got T Bay Tel, T Bay Hydro, and it's, it's creating those, that would be the same kind of thing, right? Like it's, it's revenue from a different stream that's going to help the homeowner pay ultimately less tax, if that's.
Potentially. So the, the difference with those, so those are municipal service corporations. So they're structured corporately, um, as not-for-profits owned by, in Thunder Bay's case, the city. Now, in our case, we've structured it a 50 50 partnership with BN, but it's a for-profit corporation. So the difference between a for-profit and not-for-profit is legislation says X amount of not-for-profit must be reinvested back into the community. In this case, council could choose to do as they see fit with the for-profit and reinvest it where they want to do.
Okay, so you could build a port with that money or if there was excess, you could, council could choose to invest a dividend into the active living center as an example. Okay. Thank you.
Good, good. Thanks for that report. Thanks for the update. I got a, I got a motion here in front of me. I need, I got to move a second, all in favor? Very, thank you. Okay, I have to give a report on Public Works Garage financing offices, Mr. Scorchinsky, Mr. Rubio.
Uh, your worship day is 2023 budget.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Work financing, most important.
Trying to skip over the budget.
Mr. Rubio there, imagine that. Afternoon, Mayor, and coming to it.
The draft 2023 operating and capital budget was presented at a special meeting of council on January 30th. Since that time, council's input as well as additional information and details have been incorporated into the budget. The overall objective of the 2023 budget is to maintain the current level of fricks and services while keeping any increase due to the tax levy to a minimum. Due to the pandemic, the province deferred reassessment until 2024 unofficially. We haven't heard any word yet on when it comes in. But for 2023, the property values is the current value assessment as of January 1st, 2016. There is no change from the 2023 property values other than supplemental omitted and reduction notices from the impact that occurred last year. The overall assessment, including exempt properties, has decreased by a quarter percent. The increase to the residential class, which accounts for 70% of the total assessment, was a quarter percent. Commercial class in, increased by $980,000 with three significant new constructions. The mines class decreased by just under $2 million or 14% of the total assessment with the updated employee allocation of the Hamloom Mine Properties. Budget being presented today contains a budget, uh, the bundle of programs and services that council has agreed to be delivered to the residents. Operating requirements is $5.4 million. In addition to the programs and services contained in the current budget, $11.1 million in capital work is contained in this budget. Entire amount of the capital costs will be funded by government grants, long-term financing and reserves. So no high tax levy will be contributed to capital. The province has set the educational levy for the various classes. The combined educational levy to be collected on behalf of the various school boards is estimated to be $444,000. The tax levy of $5.4 million is a 2% increase from last year. The increase to the residential class is 3.99%, multi-res is an increase of 3.7%. Commercial class will have an increase of 6.72% and the industrial class is being decreased by 10.4%. So once again, the overall increase is 2.1%. I'll go over changes that have happened since the January 30th meeting, so capital. The sidewalk pulverizer has been deferred to the future. And mores has been reduced as used vehicles have been purchased. The sludge trailer has been reclassified as an operating expense. No tax levy will be used for funding capital. Reserves for capital equipment will be decreased by $1,863,000, leaving a balance of $58,000. Under administration, the actual insurance premiums are $32,000 more than had originally budgeted. Interest costs for the construction of the works garage is $117,000. We've recognized the potential of transferring land and buildings for additional revenue of $342,000. With the announcement of Earl Griggs' departure as fire chief, labor costs and equipment purchases have been decreased by $95,000. The building official, we've increased the building permit revenue by $20,000. And we've also deferred the consulting work on the official plan until next year. That is a reduction of $50,000 to the budget. In public works, we reduce training, we forego the hiring of a new class one employee. And we've had to increase the electricity cost based on the 2022 actuals by $39,000. Because in January 30th, I only had estimates, so we didn't have all the invoices yet. And we've reclassified the pipe assessment as water, which is being, which is funded by reserves. So that's a reduction of $25,000 having to be levied. The district social services administration board levy has been increased by $11,675. Council agreed to increase the funding for the food bank to $15,000 from the original $5,000. For recreation and economic development, council agreed to proceed to the next phase of the active living center on the Peninsula Harbor. Site exploration and conceptual design is half a million dollars. This is to be refunded, uh, this is to be funded 100% from reserves. So the impact to the tax levy is nil. We've produced training in recreation by $17,000. We anticipate to get a third party donation towards Canada Day, saving $5,300. We've increased the estimate for revenue for the arena by $8,000. We've reduced maintenance services to both the arena and the pool by $10,000. Now with more accurate information for his theater, we've increased our labor costs in that facility by $13,000. We've decided not to purchase the litter vacuums. That's a savings of $6,500 in the parks. We will, we do not anticipate to put new lockers or charging stations at the golf course. That's a savings of $32,500. Council agreed to increase the funding to library from 145,000 to 170,000. That's $25,000 increase. Also, council agreed to increase the funding to the group of sevens trails, uh, organization. That's an increase of $20,000 to $80,000 for 2023. Council agreed to contribute $30,000 to the snowmobile club. So the options are to prove the 2023 operating capital budget as presented or approve the budgets with amendments. Administration recommends that option A be approved and that bylaw 2048 adopting the 2023 operating and capital budget be approved as presented.
Good, thanks for that report. I go, motion here that council hereby accepts the tactical condition on 2023 operating capital budget for that the broad bylaw be adopted later this afternoon, including the 2023 operating capital budgets as presented, move by. Counsel Sukie, counsel, any questions? Counsel Valance.
And I guess it's not really necessarily a question, but more of a statement for the general public. When we look at Marathon as a municipality, either in the region or the province, we're not going to be considered an outlier when we look at our budget compared to everyone else, right? Everyone else is going to be in this position. All communities are going to be looking at increases, from my understanding, because insurance costs have gone up, everything's gone up. We're going to see, from my understanding, a majority of the municipalities have to go this route as well.
Many have gone higher, some have gone lower. So I wouldn't say we're an outlier. It's just, this is what Marathon is bringing. Okay, we haven't really followed everybody. 4% seems to be, I'm not going to say a comfortable thing, but every municipality is being hit with the same inflationary costs.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I appreciate your, your efforts towards it. I know it wasn't easy. Uh, but one question I do have is just for, I know you guys pride yourselves on training and updating your staff and some of the cutbacks for the training that you've done to both recreation and public work. Does it negatively impact any of the current operations or, or for either public works or recreation or?
No, actually a lot of it, the savings, uh, we went from really focused on, uh, web-based training this year as opposed to in-person, uh, to find the cost savings. Um, and in other cases, uh, it's just reduction of staff or, or, you know, seeing staff move on. Um, so those dollars that were originally budgeted, uh, no longer required. So the, the training budget in January that we derive is always a bit of a moving target, um, you know, because we never know that, you know, the exact operation or, or the number of employees. So I think there's still, uh, you know, top of my head, probably $50,000 investment, our employees through training this year. So, uh, still a good investment. So as an example, just two weeks ago, uh, we had Ontario Recreation Facilities Association and Marathon doing Refrigeration B training for all of our arena staff. So I think we found a good mix of online as well as in-person training for this year.
Absolutely.
Um, yeah, and, and so I know it's, the headline is probably 4% tax increase.
3.99.
But it's not, right? Like it had assessment stayed the same as it was last time as a 2% increase in the budget. And this is what I, I just think gets lost in some of the shuffle, but the big winner here, if there's a winner in any budget, is the mine. Because they had less, they're paying 10% less than they did in the previous, but it's not that council passed a 4% budget. We passed a 2% budget, but the way that the, it gets applied, it looks like 4% for the residents. And I think maybe the question would be to me is how do we drive that industrial number higher so that residents don't bear the burden all the time of any tax increase? So I, I don't know if there's, you know, a conversation with the new mine manager, whoever that's going to be, uh, or something proactively we can do around, you know, trying to attract Barrick Hamilton employees, because that's going to drive that number. Uh, certainly a, a new industry is going to help, but how is a, you know, how's the council, can we help promote that number? Uh, because really that's what drives the 4% is the reduction of Hamilton employees.
That's, yeah, 2% of that accounting for that. And the legislation is there. We, we envisioned having the, uh, the split between us and Man Twaj concrete a couple of years ago, but that was never done. And, uh, the tax ratio, which I'll talk about in May, we're at the maximum for our industrial group.
And I, supplemental, I think that's a really important point is, I think residents would say, well, then why you raise the mine rate? And, and legally can't, right? You can only bring it down. Uh, I remember when I first sat on council, I think the mill rate was.
It was over 5.
Maybe even higher than that, it was.
5.6.
And, and we brought it down to help mill out. Um, but it's, it is important that we can't, the residents, that we can't just raise that. That's actually illegal.
Correct.
So I, I do think, you know, we're going to hear it's a 4% increase. Uh, it's not, it's a 2% increase with a decrease for some of the, the, the parts. I wish it was for the residents, but it's not.
Your work.
Yeah. Do you have an answer for that? Are you good?
Just, if I can, yours, if I could just comment further, right? And, and it, it's a really simplistic view, but it's completely true. And it's also applicable to fees and charges when we look at, you know, how we, you know, we, we have those in town. We need more people, we need a larger population, because in Ontario, assessment is of what drives your budget, right? And then the second piece of that is user fees drive your budget. Well, if you go from 4,000 people on Marathon to 7,000 people and you add another 150 new homes and let's say, you know, four more businesses to, you know, accommodate that, then, you know, that budget number is going to decrease because we have a broader assessment. So, you know, it's, it's not that simple, but more population is really what we need in Marathon, you know, as we have a progressive growth budget again this year.
Absolutely, Counsel Valance.
And to follow up to Counselor Lake's question, did Man Twaj also see a reduction from Barrick on their end as well?
No, more Man Twaj seen the benefits.
Because they still have more people.
More people.
In houses, working.
More people on June 2022 were working or their increase went up 10% to the detriment of the town of Marathon.
Okay, my next question is, did we have the levy come in from the, uh, health unit? Has that saw an increase this year or what does that look like?
It's come in, it's minimal.
Okay.
Cause we. So I was actually going to bring up the same thing Counselor Sukie brought up about making sure we continue to develop our employees. But my question would be, it says deferred consulting work on the official plan. So is it, we just defer in that for one year as of now? Yeah, so the official plan, it's 10 years, uh, every 10 years you have to, uh, you know, update the plan. So we get our plan in 2015. So it's due in 2025. Um, so a lot of the work that we're doing right now, so we've hired a contract planner. Um, and a lot of the work that we're doing for the Penn Lake subdivision, um, geotechnical work is going to be, and policy work is going to be applicable for the OP going forward. So we'll rebudget those numbers in 2024 and start that process. Now in 2025, we don't have to have it done. We have to show that we've made progress on updating the plan. So realistically, probably a two-year process. So start in 2024 and with completion in 2026.
You know, the frustrating part about the official plan council, whether it's that we went back to the government pushing to 15 to cover for a five year to a 10 year, they agree. But a lot of times in smaller municipalities, you know, a lot of things don't change in your OP. But you still have to spend that 50 to 75,000 dollars to update the OP, which is really ridiculous. But we're, we were successful getting from five to 10, so that was, that was way for municipalities. Anybody else? I had a couple of questions, if you don't mind. So Counsel Lake made a very good point about 2.1 is the average increase, but because of the shifting of, of, uh, you know, increases in regards to certain, uh, commercial or, or light industrial or multi-residential and then we, of course, reduction in industrial class. We're going to see that. You talk about the $342,000 shortfall. That's not all. We've taken a lot of monies out of our reserve account this year to meet the goals of council's, uh, progress going forward. So for example, the $500,000 is coming directly out of reserves to purchase the plan or the contingency plans to develop the active living center for all those costs associated with that. Other capital purchases are coming out of reserves specifically to address those needs of our municipality before. If we didn't, we'd be in a lot different shape. We'd be probably looking at 10 to 12 or 15%. My question is, even though we approved all that, if for whatever reason the lands or buildings don't happen in sale, what would that reflect in an actual increased potential for the rain piers of Marathon at the $342,000 shortfall?
Not yet. If that didn't come in, instead of a 4% increase, we'd have to increase, uh, or we'd have to raise increase the tax rate for just the residential class by 8.4% or roughly $230 a household.
So there's one accounts to be aware of that. So we made some really tough decisions on how we're going to go forward and fund this, but we hope that all, all those things happen so that we're not coming back in the fall and talking about the very thing. Uh, one, one thing is about the confusion of tax and multi-res, res and commercial industrial sites is about that very thing. Impact has not reassessed since 2016 and there's going to be a lot of people who are really going to be a lot of confusion going on. We've asked Impact and Counsel, I mean, Mr. Scorchinsky and myself are going to meet with Impact reps at, at Noma conferences at the end of April to have the opportunity to speak about that and the impacts of our industrial rate as well, because we're still been arguing that point. Because we're still been arguing that point about, as you say, Counselor Lake, what's the value of the mines? We don't want the mines paying unfair taxation, but we want the mines paying a fair taxation. As we know, potentially the generation project gets started and developed, we won't see the taxation, that's say probably till minimum twenty-five. So, because you can't tax something that's in the process of, of construction, only in operation. So that, we're, we're going to not see any real revenue from that, at least at the end of twenty-four, early twenty-five, if we're lucky. So, so when we talk about all those different rates, we want to make sure we sell people that if they have insurance, to reach out, reach out to the treasurer. Because the three point nine nine is the average increase for the residential, but as you say, it's two point one percent increase over last year's budget amount. Not much we can do about that. Other than that, I think you've done a really good job in regards to some of those things, and everybody's concerned about making sure that we do the right thing in the community. We want to make sure that we're advancing the community forward, and there is some excitement in the air. But we think there's some great opportunities in our community, so we want to make sure we're progressing and doing the right thing. And as Counselor Val stated, there are a lot of our neighbors out there that are going to be a lot higher in this rate, but very little progression going on in their community. They're just staying static, but yet have huge increase in taxation to meet the goals of operating the municipality. So we're doing well, and we do have, have some, some challenges ahead of us, but we're, we're going to hopefully come through this year with the, the identified stuff that's been presented to us from administration, though really it comes along the way. With that being said, no other questions? Budget. I'll call a question, all in favor of that motion? And I thank you, administration, for doing a great work on the budget, and, you know, there's a lot of hard work behind the scenes we don't see. We just get presented with a, a wrap-up, and the other day, we, we had very input on that as well, so, uh, thanks for that.
Congratulations, yes.
Thank you.
New shoes.
New shoes?
Got some new shoes.
The walking shoes, Mr. Verbal. Up next, I have a quick update on garage, your public works garage finance, Mr. Verbal.
The construction of the new public works garage is budgeted, costs ten point seven million dollars. During this year's budget deliberations, it was agreed that the town Marathon would finance the project with long-term debt. The construction phase is estimated to be twelve to eighteen months. Payments for material and services will be required monthly starting in May. Short-term financing is available from Infrastructure Ontario and the municipality banker, which is TD Canada Trust. The cost of borrowing is very similar from both lenders. At the end of construction, the short-term loan will be converted into long-term debt either by debenture from Infrastructure Ontario or a bank loan from TD. Each lender has its advantages and disadvantages. Infrastructure Ontario has a lower cost of borrowing, which is approximately one percent. With a twenty-year debenture of ten million dollars, the interest costs approximately five point one million dollars over that twenty years. Annual payments would be seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. The initial paperwork is more demanding than a bank loan. IO requires a bylaw authorizing the borrowing, along with documentation from the treasurer. Once the construction loan is converted into debenture, the payments are fixed for the term of the long-term debt. No changes to the interest rate and no prepayments are allowed. The bank can't match IO's interest rates. A twenty-year loan of ten million dollars would cost approximately six point three million dollars in interest. This would equate to annual payments of eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. This is fifty-seven thousand dollars more a year than the debenture. TD did mention that the rate indicated on their term sheet would be reviewed as the bank is very keen on earning our business. Terms for the loan can be fixed from one to twenty years. Premain, prepayment is permitted without penalty on floating rate loans, while fixed rate loans have a ten percent penalty. Currently, the only long-term debt the municipality has is a debenture for the landfill site that was first in October twenty thirty. Based on the current economic situation, an IO loan would be fifty-seven thousand dollars less per year than a bank loan. It's impossible to forecast what interest rates will be at the end of the construction when the short-term loan will have to be converted into long-term debt. So the options are select Infrastructure Ontario as a lender for the, with the intention of entering into a twenty-year debenture with a fixed interest rate. Or select TD Canada Trust as a lender with intention of entering into a bank loan with terms that will be decided once the construction is completed. Or split the financing, financing between the two lenders. The administration presents this report to council for their information and direction.
Thank you for that report. Excuse me, I report that council hereby accepts the tax report on condition of the equity diversity policy TMS zero zero two zero.
Wrong motion, your version.
Oh, sorry. There we go, sorry. Counselor hereby accepts the tax report of public works garage financing options, and further that the council approved the following options in regards to the financing construction in the public works garage. Move by. Counselor Lake, second, counsel Val. Questions? Counselor Val.
How bad does TD want the business?
They, they'll probably, they, sorry. They may shave a fraction, but they won't get close to IO.
Okay, does the rate change depending on if it's a floating term or if it's a fixed term?
No, it, it just, they can come and give us another shave off a half a percent, or I, I'm not, I'm putting words in their mouth too. They said, this is what's on the term loan, and this we might be more aggressive if we get the money. But five million dollars, half of the loan or the full loan, will make no difference on the interest rate.
I don't sit in the dentist's chair and tell them what to do, so you're the dentist. What's your recommendation as the treasurer, in terms of, you've taken a lot more motion, I know.
I'm putting the dice in council's hand to roll, because so, someone has to decide.
Counselor Suki.
As, as a town in previous, like the penitentiaries or loans ever had the luxury of prepayment?
Yes, we've, when we had the original loan. What was that one for?
When I, we've had loans for different aspects, and we paid down based on the interest rate, what was the savings, right? We talked about that, and then when we recently went to the venture in nineteen ninety-one for some, almost ten nine dollars, we logged that in because the rate was at that time scary, it was almost ten percent. So we, we thought, you know, the rates at eighteen previous to that, we better lock in. So in this case, I think, you know, I recommend to council, you take the locked-in rate, you know where you are for twenty years. No different than we did with the manners, we locked in, we locked in. We know every year from year one to year twenty is seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. No gap, no gimmicks, you go to the bank, which is a great opportunity, but it could, it could be very well after five years, you lock in and half of that, they were up two percent.
They give you the option, you can lock in for twenty years, or twenty, you're still paying an additional, what you said, fifty-seven thousand dollars annually?
Correct.
If you're going to lock in, why would you lock in that rate?
Counselor Val.
Yeah, just a little bit more clarification around the interest rate at the end of construction. So post-construction, they can come in and offer a different, like what does that all look like? And through a bank, would it be more structured or?
They don't know right now what can happen, so if construction is done, say, July twenty twenty-four, and the interest rate is five percent. IO will say, okay, you're going to convert that construction loan to a long-term and it'll be five percent. TD says, well, you can take that ten million dollars spent, we can do it as a floater, which could be at four percent. Or who knows if the war in Ukraine is over and then economy is a lot easier and so forth. Then they'll say, well, why don't we put it in as floating? And if the interest rates go down, we'll lock it in then, or if it goes higher, we can lock it in before it goes higher.
Counselor, really?
Let's, it, is splitting the financing between the two, is that something we've done before, or would this be like unprecedented?
Unprecedented for the town of Marathon.
Mr. Skrotchinsky.
Yeah, the, the way to think about both options is with Infrastructure Ontario, it's a very simple process. Right, it's a construction loan that gets converted to a debenture, that's it, right? We eliminate the risk, right? We know what the numbers are. With TD, as the treasurer just explained, we have more products available to us once we complete construction, right? But it comes with a risk factors, right? And council needs to be comfortable knowing that that's what that comes with. That's the big difference. IO is very straightforward. TD, because it's a commercial bank, gives you more options, right? But more options with risk.
Thanks, counsel. See you. Counselor Val.
I guess just from your experience and administration's experience, which one would you assume has the less risk factor?
IO.
IO, then that's where I personally.
Yeah, you know, it's like, you know, we don't recommend our treasurer to go buy stocks in the stock market because there's risk. But we do recommend buying GIC because there's no risk, you know, at the end of the year, you're going to get two percent or three percent or five percent. So I, I'm recommending council, no different, IO is a locked-in number. We know for twenty years, we're paying seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars roughly for a payment. Period. But we also can't pay it off any earlier, if we land some money or nothing like that, so that's the, that's the lock-in portion. But at the end of the day, still, during debenturing this facility out, it's no different than we mortgage our homes, right? We, we need a home to live in for twenty-five years, we mortgage a typically an average home or the garage is going to be your life for next fifty years, we're mortgaging for twenty.
And the debt belongs to future residents as well as current.
All of us, those same people in the future will need their roads plowed and their sidewalks cleaned and, and the plumbing fixed, correct? Anything else? I think we're going to take on the IO option. Okay, locked in for twenty.
Yeah, well, we don't lock it in, it's just we'll get a construction loan, I'll bring it to the next getting a council, and we'll agree to have this construction loan at a certain percentage. And then at the end of construction, they'll give us the paperwork and the bylaws to flip it into a twenty-year debenture.
Good. Counselor Lake, counsel Val, please, don't call a question on favor. Great, thank you. Thanks for the reports, Mr. Verbal. Excuse me, I'm next, we have reported equity and diversity policy, Mr. Skrotchinsky. As I was reading your report, basically, thank you, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Like other communities in the province and in the country, the town of Marathon acknowledges us that systemic racism and discrimination based on race, color, ethnic origin, ancestry, religion, place of origin or related stereotypes exist. Council has directed administration to include equity and diversity as an action item in the drafted two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-six corporate strategic plan for the municipality. TMS zero zero two one equity and diversity policy has been developed to represent the town's commitment to creating and maintaining a workplace culture where all employees feel valued and equal. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-three, all town employees and council will be assigned to complete equity and diversity training using an online platform. Administration will continue to look for opportunities to train, educate, and encourage our employees to ensure those of various backgrounds feel welcome and supported in doing their best work at the town. So financial implications, none at this time. Your options, A, approved policy TMS zero zero two one as presented. B, approved policy with additional or alternative revisions, or C, do not approve the policy. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that the policy for equity and diversity be approved as presented, and further that this policy be included in the town's policy guideline manual.
Great, thanks for the report of the motion, counsel hereby accepts the tax, sort of condition on the equity and diversity policy TMS zero zero two zero. I'm telling you that the equity and diversity policy TMS zero zero two one be approved as presented with the copy of this policy placed in the town's policy guideline manual. Move by. As you've been saying, like, counsel Lake, questions? Counselor Lake.
Who is, so the online platform for the training, who provides that?
So we'll be providing that, but it will most likely be offered through our e-based program that we're rolling out. We're just having secured as of yet, so in the fall, we should be ready to present that, so council would be required to complete that as well.
That's great.
Great, anything else? So.
I just, I'm thinking back, and then CEO might remember this, we went, and I'm thinking of diversity and equity training, we went to Beetogon as a council. Can't remember how many years ago that was, that was a fantastic training in terms of learning the context, the history of this very particular region. Diversity, yes, but mostly in the region. I'm just wondering if that also might be a possibility for, for, and council, it was a really, a really, I thought, great experience.
Certainly, I can reach out to, to the end and acquire.
Was that, that was a long time, it's there.
Oh, yeah.
Ten plus, ten plus.
So in regards to the policy manuals, in regards to this, the, excuse me, diversification of equity in regards to the municipality, you know, the harassment policy is very well kicked in at this point, addresses that very concern, because we've been very good in our community, and there's very little issues around that, but from time to time, you do have to see, you have addressed it through that policy as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you have anything else?
It just, it goes hand in hand with the respect policy, so it just, it all makes sense, right?
I was going to ask that, we're, we're struggling to maintain the respect policy, this doesn't replace that policy?
No.
No, and they, they all, they all, they all tie together, right? So, you know, luckily, we, we rarely have to use them, right? But our harassment policy, unreasonable customer behavior, you know, our discipline policy, we have to use it, right? They all, anytime we make an update that's approved by council, we update, we housekeep all the other ones, so they all tie together from a flow perspective.
Good. Okay, so I'll call a question on favor. Thanks. Thanks for that report. And next we have bylaw, bylaw number twenty forty-seven being a bylaw to authorize corporate town Marathon to enter into a land lease agreement with the Prince of Harbour for authority. At least of the portion pin number six two four four eight dash zero four two seven and pin number six two five oh one dash zero zero four be read at first, second, and third time. Finally, pass this eleventh day of April twenty twenty-three, move by. Counselor Val, it's got to be by counsel Wheeler, any questions to that bylaw? Very doubtful question, all in favor? Great, thank you. And bylaw number twenty forty-eight being a bylaw to adopt the estimates and all sums required during the year two thousand and twenty-three to be read at first, second, and third time, finally passed. It's eleven day of April twenty twenty-three, move by. Counselor Suki, second, by counsel Lake, any questions to that bylaw? Very done, all in favor? Very, thank you. Motion here, council hereby supports the town of a district social service administration board letter to Premier Doug Correy regarding the homeless crisis, and further that administration be directed to send letter to the premier's office and the individual listed requesting calling for actions. And I need a mover second, put that in the book. Counselor Lake, second, by counsel, ask questions?
Let's make a comment that, and yourself and Mrs. Skrotchinsky traveled to Ottawa, that was one of the first comments that, that Mrs. Skrotchinsky's made since the last time you presented that. Or went to, to Amla or went to Ottawa for, for a function, that the, the number of homeless people can't ever, ever down, and I was kind of surprised to you, like, probably been eight to ten years since I've been to Ottawa, and at that point, it wasn't really a thing, we moved downtown Toronto, it was always, always present, but even more so this time around from previous years.
Absolutely, Ottawa was very surprising because we had the COVID break, you're absolutely right, Counselor Suki, but I sit on the housing committee with Amla, and there, there was actually another session on April fourth and fifth, that, that they're requesting all mayors and CAOs to attend throughout the province by trial to get a better grip on in regards to the one point five million homes that the province wants to be built. And we also now, through our official plan incorporated the tiny home scenario that we can look at in our community as well. For ability, there was a presentation at Thunder Bay at the Thunder Bay District Assembly, on tiny homes, I was quite surprised because they're talking about developing a, a tiny home park in Thunder Bay, and so I asked a question after the presentation, the homes were like, and I brought it into our attention in our last meeting. Over two hundred thousand of them are going, how can anybody who's in the struggling for a home can afford a tiny home? This is something that's gone a little bit, you know, maybe farther than that. So I reached out to a company, and I, I've been, I got a meeting Thursday morning with them, and they're already in the States, and they're doing a presentation. They're actually looking at the city of London right now, that's called Pallet, Pallet Homes, have you seen it? And they're small units, similar to about two hundred and fifty square feet. And they come in a community scenario where they can develop the sidewalk system, a community of these smaller units, then a common bathroom and gathering area for the individuals in certain cities. Now, we're not specific in that situation, but I think the province is in, is in really dire needs of, of homes throughout the province. So maybe there's an opportunity there, but I'll, I'll update council on that as well, that meeting. But whether we attend the, May fourth, I haven't responded to Amla yet, and I'll, I'll reach out to Mr. Skrotchinsky. I think it's important for us to have an understanding, but at the same time, we're doing, you know, really well with the thirty unit, the fifty unit being developed in our community. And then potentially with the development of a hundred and five home lot system subdivision extension. We're, we're atop a situation, but we do still have coast surfing in our community. We don't call it homelessness because we don't see people lying in the snowbank, our community, but there is coast surfing. So there is an effect in our community, but it's not, you know, prevalent as much it is in the bigger centers, counsel Val.
That's what I was going to bring up, because I remember a few years back, probably about two years back, through the GSAB, there was a conversation regarding youth and homelessness and coast surfing and everything like that, and how like under the rug of a problem it actually was, and that no one was discussing it. It seems like it's only snowballed since because of COVID and everything like that, right? So clearly, there's a racism, for sure.
Absolutely, I said with the CEO of Thunder Bay, the Thunder Bay District Assembly, and, and their average rate now is about fifteen thousand non-residents in Thunder Bay. So of that fifteen thousand, we know they're not all on the street, but there's a lot of, no, no. So of that fifteen thousand, we know they're not all on the street, but there's a lot of, uh, no, no address attached to those individuals, so is the co-surfacing and visiting. But they're impacting the services of City of Thunder Bay, that's, you know, a hundred thousand people, so we have. You know, fifty or a hundred people in our community that doing that same thing, our housing impacted the services provided, that it does impact, you know, in, in a, a big way that we don't really see. Hospital, uh, policing, fire, um, you know, recreation, all those things get affected by those individuals. Who are not part of the community yet, other than serving, co-surfacing, surfing, or, or uh, on the street, and in summertime, you'll see that. At Thunder Bay, but you won't in winter, obviously, because that, but that impacts into the jail systems, because now they go do a petty crime. To go to court, to go to jail for six months to get a, a warm place to stay, because we live where we live, right, so. Anyway, I'll, I'll update council on that afterwards, but this is a, this is a very big thing for, for all of Ontario, not just uh, Northwest. All in favor? Very, thanks. And prior to adjournment, we will be going to a camera session right after this public meeting, we'll be going in to discuss the. Items on the agenda will be a labor relations, employee negotiations. With that being said, uh, we will adjourn this meeting at four fifty PM, move by, Counselor Val, second by Counselor Suki, thank you very much, and have a good night.